This meeting is being recorded.
Hi, this is Melanie. I'm not seeing my picture that says that you have to start the video, the host does.
We'll go ahead, Alderman, Rummel and Bushman and get you turned on here in a second. And then after that, George, you're ready to begin when you are.
There we go.
Do we have everybody?
Okay, sir, you're good to go.
Thanks, everyone. Off we go. Welcome to the Monday, April 6, 2020. Virtual meeting of the Lake Forest City Council. First official virtual Lake Forest City Council meeting. Will the clerk please call the roll?
I roll Mayor Pandeleon.
Here.
Alderman Beidler. Alderman Morris.
Here.
Alderman Notes. Alderman Rauhl.
Here.
Alderman Preschlack.
Here.
Alderman Gashkarian. Alderman Moreno.
Here.
Alderman Bushman.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Betty. Will you all please join us in the pledge of allegiance? Pledge allegiance. Okay. First start on the first item on the agenda is report of city officers. First thing is comments by mayor, and I have a couple. First, I want to report on the mayor's state of emergency declaration and request that the city council extend the declaration to the next city council meeting. On Saturday, I issued a declaration of a local state of emergency for Lake Forest, which will which makes it possible for us to exercise flexibility in deploying city resources to aid and protect the residents of Lake Forest and to support the city's response to the pandemic. It's also useful to us in achieving financial recovery from federal and state agencies. So I would ask for any comments or questions about that from the council. And then will we, Betty, will we ask for a vote on this later, or is this going to happen right now?
We could have discussion and vote on it right now is fine.
Thank you. So comments, questions? Done? We might as well vote then. Is this a roll call vote?
Yes, sir.
Need a motion.
We need a motion.
Oh, sorry.
Mr. Mayor, I ask that the approve the mayor's declaration until the next city council's meeting as requested.
Seconded.
Okay, now the roll call vote.
Alderman Beidler.
Hi.
Alderman Morris.
Hi.
Alderman Notes.
Hi.
Alderman Rauhl.
Hi.
Alderman Preschlack.
Hi.
Alderman Gashkarian.
Hi.
Alderman Moreno.
Hi.
Alderman Bushman.
Hi.
Eight yeas, zero nays. Motion carries.
Thank you, Betty. Thank you, everyone. The next thing I'd like to do for a moment is to just give a, and I know this is the sense of the council based on conversations that I've had with many of the, many if not all of the aldermen. Just a massive thank you to the city staff who have just, you know, really bent the curve to make sure that the city keeps functioning. We've had to radically accelerate a lot of initiatives to maintain remote capabilities in terms of how we function. Some of the some of the functions of the city staff don't really lend themselves to remote work. And there's been a lot of creativity and innovation sort of exhibited by the staff across the board. The willingness to just figure out a way and get things done has been nothing short of extraordinary. And we have moved, we have moved our technological capabilities forward probably by two or three years, just in these last couple of weeks. So thanks to all of you. Thank you especially to Jason for leading the charge and for Jim Shaw being here just in the nick of time to help us really accelerate all this. It's been, it's been remarkable and very gratifying. And I think you all know that you have our 100% support and gratitude. And the city, all the citizens of Lake Forest should share that. So thank you to the city staff.
George, would it be possible to just make one comment here to add on to what we've done? One of the things that I've most appreciated is the the daily updates that come from the city. I was looking at one just before our meeting started. And I want to be sure, I'm not sure if I'm the right person to, but I have heard from a number of people how much they appreciate those updates. I think we get them every day from the mayor's office except Sunday. But I want to be sure that people know that you have to opt in to get those. That's not something that the city doesn't automatically send to your email. Is there, is there somebody who would like to clarify exactly how people might do that if they would like to receive those updates?
Yeah, Alderman Beidler, I had intended to address that during my comments, but I'm happy to just go ahead and share that now.
One of the best things you've done.
Individuals who may be watching who are not. Sure, yeah, no, no question. And I'll just say first, all of the credit really goes to communications manager Susan Banks, assistant city manager Mike Strong, and all of our department heads who are not only providing the content on a daily basis, but are also formatting emails to get them out to the public. So they've really done a remarkable job on that. For those who are watching this and are not currently receiving those emails, you can go to the city's website and click the button to sign up for e-news. E-news email blasts, and you will begin to receive those immediately. And as Alderman Beidler referenced, we have been sending them out daily to the community at this point.
Thank you, Alderman Beidler. That's a well well-deserved compliment. And we really have dramatically expanded the number of people that are on the constant contact email blast list. And for anybody out there that's watching that hasn't put their name on that, it's, it's very valuable for the city to be able to reach out and share information directly into people's emails. But we won't do it unless, unless you allow us. I wanted to do, make a couple of comments about some general issues because it's been an interesting month. And I just, I just, in no particular order, wanted to run through some observations. I mentioned before, we've had to convert enormous number of city operations to be able to function remotely in a very short period of time. That, that has been a huge accomplishment. We have also been equipping the fire and police departments with appropriate personal protective equipment and other special resources that they need to protect themselves and, and all of our residents from exposure to the coronavirus. That is going reasonably well, but donations are still much appreciated. We have, in light of the, what I personally believe are going to be pretty dire financial impacts of this whole experience of basically, a friend of mine described it as putting the US economy into a cell, into a medically induced coma and then trying to bring it out. We have been already started running financial scenarios to see how this might affect the city's financial situation going forward. Thankfully, we have ample reserves. We are in very good financial position. I know that's been a source of some controversy around the community over the last couple of years. This is the Black Swan event that we were worried about. We didn't know what it was. We didn't know where it was coming from, but we knew something was coming sometime. And we knew that the state wasn't going to be in a position to support us as much as we might like. Now is when it pays. And so that's something we can be very thankful for. The city is now, now that we've stabilized things, and Jason will talk about this in more detail later, we are starting to think about ways to add additional services. For instance, Finance Director Hollab figured out a way to allow processing of real estate transfer tax stamps by changing some of our, slightly changing some of our procedures so that real estate closings can happen. That, that wasn't something that was going on two weeks ago. But I don't know what day it starts, but it's either, it may have already started. I think it started late last week. So real estate closing can now happen again. We're looking for other ways to, to, to reignite some of the city services that we've had to sort of put on hiatus because of the need to work remotely and the, and the need to protect both the citizens and and our staff from exposure. So, but you're going to see, I think, over the next week or two, an increase, an increasing number of modified procedures that will allow us to function more completely as the city government. And we're exploring other ways to help. I'll touch on this in a second, but ways to support our local business community, ways to help people communicate as effectively as they can and get information, which we were just talking about. And then, believe it or not, there will be opportunities that come out of this. One of the things we're seeing is a lot of capital projects around the region are being canceled by other communities, which is going to free up contractors and create more competition. And we hope help us reduce the cost of quite a few of our capital projects. We'll obviously have to take a close look at all the capital projects as the year goes on with a view toward the final budget and resources that are available. But we may have some opportunities to save the city a lot of money here. Bond rates are extraordinarily low, and so we're going to keep looking for ways to take advantage of that. And essentially moving toward a virtual, a world of virtual everything wherever possible, as quickly as we can get there. So so there's, there's a lot of, there's good news on the horizon here as the state and the area go through our approach to the apex, which is expected in the next two or three weeks. We are getting, I will say, just personal observation, seems like we're getting better cooperation and better observation of social distancing from our neighbors. But it's not perfect, and actually, it's still far from perfect. So we pretty much are on a day by day basis in terms of what we're going to be doing with the parks in the beach. It's, it's, we sort of look at it every day. If it's a very nice day and things get out of control, we're still, you know, we have to be responsible and not have an attractive nuisance created. So we're going to continue to monitor that very closely. The thing I touched on before is way, a way to, one, one way we are considering about helping the business community is to consider some rebates of city sales taxes. We can, we've talked about this in a couple of different ways. We are, I just wanted to introduce the concept tonight. We can have some general discussion. I think all the aldermen have seen the broad outlines or heard the broad outlines of what we're thinking. But we haven't nailed down all the details yet. We hope that for our meeting on April 20. But the idea would be to look at what local businesses, and these would be rest, local restaurants, local shops. Very targeted to that, to that community. Look at what they paid the city in sales tax last year. And then through a structured application and establishing of a pool of dollars to to work with here to find ways to rebate those taxes from last year or some portion of those taxes from last year as the stores and shops and restaurants reopen and as they stay open. So at that, I guess, is it appropriate to have some general discussion of that concept now? I know I've shared the, the general concept. We've said, a couple of aldermen have dived into some of the details a little bit. Or should we have Elizabeth present the broad outlines of that later in the meeting?
I think it would be good to have Elizabeth do her general outline.
Okay.
Everybody on the same page.
Okay, sounds good. That's what we'll do. Sorry for the, we, this is a bit, we're doing this a bit more on the fly than we usually do. It's been a little, it's been a little hectic, so I apologize if we seem a little disorganized tonight, but we're going to get through this. Those are my comments. I, again, tremendous thanks to the staff for really rallying and keeping everything functioning. And for police and fire, particularly our paramedics and our police officers and others who are dealing with first response risks that are, I can only, I can only imagine. And God bless you all. So those are my comments. Next would be comments by the city manager.
Did you want Elizabeth to spend a few minutes? Make sort of a broad overview of potential local financial relief business assistance programs?
Sure, that'd be great. Great place to start.
Okay, good. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good evening, Mayor and city council members. Two specific local stimulus packages have, have been approved by governing boards communities, Outgrow did and across the board rebate the residents via their water bill. And Wellmet did a more targeted approach of rebating sales tax to local businesses. Primary concept here is to be similar to Wellmet, but provide a financial incentive and support to local businesses who are going to try reopen and resume operations when conditions allow. So the process is that we would take a look at local businesses and the sales tax that they generated in calendar year 2019 and provide them an opportunity to be rebated a portion of the sales tax that is generated beginning March and going forward. So it would be a forward-looking approach, providing rebate of sales tax as they try to get back on their feet and resume operations just to support them a little bit financially in getting through the current year.
Questions or comments?
Yeah, I have just a general comment. I have a former partner of mine that from Wellmet, and I asked him about how that program is being received in the community. And he just said it's, it's being very supportive. And he thought just one of the unique characteristics of of all of North Shore, but you know, towns like Lake Forest and Wellmet were that we are really caring about the entrepreneurs that are fabric of the community. And there seemed to be very positive acceptance of the concept. And so I think our, our community would embrace that concept as well, especially as we think through all the details and terms of, you know, how you apply for it and who's eligible and just all those other things. But I think it's, you know, it's, it's not going to make or break a business, but it does send a tone that we care. We understand the hardships that they're facing. And I think it's appropriate, and I'm very supporting of your efforts to do that, Mr. Mayor, and appreciate you guys taking the lead on that.
Thank you. Other, other comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Gashkarian.
I'm in agreement with Alderman Preschlack. One of the things that I want to make sure of is, as we do consider these options, we're looking at all of our finances in the entirety. One of my concerns is that some of these capital projects that we do have, if we prioritize them effectively, and some do have higher priority over others. And balancing out some of those rebates that may potentially be there for retail owners, balancing that with the actual needs of the residents themselves. And I, I would be a little uncomfortable if we sacrificed one for the other. Our primary charge being the residents of the city of Lake Forest. All things being equal, if it's not a negative impact, I think we all could embrace them warmly. But I'm resident, reticent to embrace one over the other.
Well, I think, just to put it in context, one of the things that the people of the town, one of the things that the residents really appreciate is the local shops and restaurants. So to the extent that we can help them prosper, that's definitely, that's definitely something that benefits everybody. So thank you. Any other comments?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, this is Prue. I'm very enthusiastic about this. I like the references to tone, and I think the, what you just said about the quality of life is very much created by the fabric of the, of the, of the businesses in town of all sorts. We have lots of different kinds of businesses and service and retail and restaurants. And I think, I think letting them know how much we value them, them starting again and supporting them in a, in a fair way makes a lot of sense.
Thank you.
This is Alderman, this is Alderman Rauhl. As you know, Mr. Mayor, I did a, probably a deeper dive into this than, you know, I sort of took off from the proposal that was in Wellmet and asked a lot of questions about how it would be implemented. I don't think this is probably the time or the place to get into those in a lot of detail. But you have the comments. And Jason, I don't think Jason has them. And maybe if they were forwarded to Elizabeth, just to consider as we're crafting our own program here. Again, I'm very supportive of it. I echo Alderman Gashkarian's concerns. I think we certainly need to know the full budget impact or projection of how we think this will impact our, our budget. I know we are fortunate to have reserves. But those reserves are there potentially to take care of some other issues that we have as well. So, so thank you. I appreciate the initiative, and I think it's a very positive one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I would like to add, I think this is extremely important to do. This is what our residents are looking for, that we have life after COVID and 19. So it's extremely important that we preserve institutions, the restaurants, the services, the businesses that we have in town. This is why we exist, in my view. So I'm really heartened by the initiative that everyone has taken to pursue this. I think it's, it's spot on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor. Yeah, just to add to that, I again concur with the comments that were made. And one point to keep in mind to Alderman Gashkarian's concern is I believe they're going to be looking to tie this to the future generation of sales tax. So to the extent we can help them come back, it's obviously good for our citizens, good for our community, good for the marketplace. It's also good for the city because they do generate a sales tax. And to the extent we can help them by providing a little bit of a holiday or an offset to that, I think is a wonderful, wonderful thing.
Thank you. I'm Laura.
Just wanted to say, I agree with all those comments. I think the director of Hollab is going to come back in the finance committee later in April with a more detailed analysis of the program and a proposal. Wanted to make sure she was okay with that idea.
I am prepared to bring that back on the 20th. Thank you.
Good.
And I will say, we'll certainly solicit feedback and input from all the aldermen in anticipation of the conversation on the 20th. And as the mayor has alluded to, and I can touch on it a little bit during my report, certainly, we will be prepared to have the appropriate sort of financial contact for the council to have that discussions. We'll plan on that at the next meeting as well.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, well, thanks, everybody for their, for your input. And this is something hopefully we'll have fleshed out sufficiently to have on the agenda for our next meeting for vote. So other comments, Jason?
Sure, I have just a couple. And I will say you did a wonderful job stealing some of my you. You handled it better than I could. But I do want to just say for those watching at home, not just thank you to the mayor and the council for all of your support, but really for, to all the residents of the community. The support you've shown for city staff over the last month really has been remarkable. I've received a lot of notes of appreciation from residents in the community. And I just want everyone watching to know how meaningful those are to staff during these trying times. And another note that the mayor touched upon, but we've received a lot of inquiries about how people can support staff. And one of the things that the mayor acknowledged was we are accepting donations of personal protective or other safety equipment. So for those watching tonight, if you have access to safety equipment and are interested in donating, please contact our chief of police. He's happy to coordinate all delivery logistics. And Chief Waldorf's contact information can be found on our city website. You know, I would also just briefly echo some of the mayor's comments about one of the other most critical things residents can do to help support staff in these times is to really stay safe and stay, so stay home. You know, our, our staff, particularly our frontline emergency responders are always here to serve the public in your time of need. But the best way we can do that is by keeping our employees healthy. And so I just encourage everyone to help do your part as well so we can keep our first responders safe so that they can continue to serve the public. And with that, I wanted to just maybe elaborate very briefly on a couple of the things that the mayor said. You know, I've been incredibly proud of the job our staff has done to keep operations largely intact. And especially because we've been able to do that while balancing the need to keep both our employees and the broader public safe during this time. And as, as the mayor alluded to, one of the silver linings, if you will, of this crisis is that it has forced us to think creatively, adapt quickly, and to try new things in order to safely deliver services to the public. And so I want those watching at home tonight to know that in addition to the, you know, frontline emergency the, you know, frontline emergency responders who are in the field, we have an incredible number of staff who are working behind the scenes remotely. In many instances, putting in longer hours now than they ever did during, you know, regular office hours such that that was the case. We've also, as the mayor alluded to, really began to expand some of our electronic service capabilities to, you know, process important citizen transactions, but to do so safely. And so some of the things we've been do over the last month, whether it be processing birth and death certificates, transfer tax stamps, and really expanding or creating and then expanding remote inspectional services using video and photo technology to complement our electronic permitting and plan review processes. This has all come about within a matter of weeks. We've come a very long way in a in a short period of time, and it really is a testament to our to our staff to be able to do that. And so in the next week or two, we will begin reassessing opportunities to bring additional services back online. We welcome suggestions from the public where they think that makes sense. I will preface that, you know, we will continue to put the health and safety of the public and our staff first and foremost when assessing what makes sense. But I do anticipate we'll be ramping up some operations in the coming weeks. So please stay tuned by both checking the city's website and as plugged a little earlier, reading the daily news briefings that we've been sending out via email. And then last, I know this was just referenced a couple of times, but to remind both the city council and the public, our finance team is running several models to forecast the impact of the COVID-19 pandemic on the city's financial health. We're examining scenarios forecasting, you know, both the severity and duration of this pandemic. But I just want to echo the mayor's comments and saying that that I can share without hyperbole that the city of Lake Forest is as well positioned to navigate these financial challenges as any community in the state of Illinois. And that's I think a real testament both to current and past mayors and city councils, to our exceptional finance director, Elizabeth Hollab, and her team in the finance department, and really to all of our department heads who are committed to austere budgeting even in the best of times so that we're prepared to deal with the worst of times when they come. And so just very proud of the position we're in. And as the mayor alluded to, again, I feel very confident that not only will we all get through this as an organization and as a community, but when we come out the other side, I think we're going to be a more efficient and higher functioning organization based on some of the experiences that we're learning from now. And so there there is some positive to come out of this. And so thank you to the council and to the public again for your continued support. And if no one has any questions, and that would conclude my report or comments for the
Any questions for Jason? All right, well, keep up the great work. I think that's that's my that's my solemn solitary comment. Next item on the agenda is committee reports. There being none, I would move on to the opportunity for citizens to address the city council on non-agenda items. Members of the public can provide public comment by calling into the following number now, eight four seven eight one zero three six four three. And we'll wait a minute to see if there are any callers. By the way, this information about the call in was shared when the published and it went out to all those on our constant contact. It's posted at City Hall.
Would just ask our staff on standby. Are there any calls waiting in the queue?
There are no calls in the queue currently.
I feel like I'm running the NPR pledge drive here. The the number to call is eight four seven eight one zero three six four three.
We have a call.
All right. Is this going to be heard live or are we going to have it transcripted?
I know it should be heard live.
Okay.
Okay, good evening, everyone. We have our first caller. They are ready to introduce themselves and ask their question. Go ahead, sir.
Yes, my name is Michael Seagull. I've been a resident for about 10 years. And constantly I'm looking at that we're always looking for money. So I see nothing wrong with subsidizing those businesses, but where's that money going to come from? This house is going to affect the common taxpayer. The federal government is supposed to be taking care of these businesses to require, you know, two hundred dollars. But my question is why do I have to pay this to this to pay open?
Thank you for your comments. That's that's helpful input.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have? Do we have other callers?
There are no other callers at the moment.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. The next item on the agenda is items for omnibus vote consideration. But before I do that, I would like to say a few words about Bill Smith, whose resolution of sympathy is on our agenda. I know many of us knew Bill from all the various things he was involved in in the community. He was a devoted and loving husband to Kiki and loving father of Hillary Duncan, Lydia and Beatrice. Bill's sense of humor, infectious laugh, and his incredible stories could bring a smile to anyone's face. He was a gracious, kind, enthusiastic man and was deeply loved by his family. Bill's commitment to municipal finance and he was a world renowned figure in the municipal finance world was was extraordinary. And he brought that expertise to the benefit of Lake Forest. He was deeply respected. He will be truly missed and our condolences go out to to Bill Smith's family. It's a great loss. I worked with him on open lands. I had my I had a daughter who was in school with his kids. Just a person, once you met him, you never forgot him and a terrible loss. So we'll miss you. I will now read the 16 items on the omnibus agenda. Some of these are left over from their March 16th meeting that was canceled. So I apologize for the length of the list here. Number one is resolution of sympathy for William Smith Audit Committee member. Number two is approval of the March 2nd, 2020 city council meeting minutes. Number three is approval of the check register for the period February 22nd to March 21st, 2020. Number four is ratification of the continuity of city employee salary and benefits during coronavirus pandemic closures. Number five is approval of an Arbor Day proclamation. Number six is approval of a tentative agreement on wages with the local chapter of the Metropolitan Order of Association of Police. Number seven is approval of a special event permit for various recurring community events proposed for 2020. Number eight is approval of a special event permit and temporary traffic controls for the Zuffin Group Three Car Show event on Sunday, August 9th, 2020 in Market Square. Hopefully, things will be back to normal by then. Number nine is consideration of an appeal of a decision to the historic of the Historic Preservation Commission denying a certificate of appropriateness and a request for deferred consideration and approval of the motion. Number 10 is consideration of a recommendation from the Plan Commission in support of approval of an update to the comprehensive plan as it relates to the Route 60 entrance corridor and surrounding area. This would be the final approval of the ordinance. Number 11 is award of a bid in the amount of $23,930 with a 10% or $2,393 contingency to Kerry's Heating and Air Conditioning for the Sterling Hall HVAC replacement project. The what? I lost a page here. Bear with me.
Pity if it did. Would you mind reciting just the last two or three?
I've got it.
Okay.
Where did I go to 11, 12? Okay, number 12 is apologize for that. Little printer failure. Number 12 is award of a bid in the amount of $31,570 with a 10% or $3,157 contingency to Core Mechanical for the Lake Forest City Hall Boiler Replacement Project. Number 13 is approval of final payment to IDOT for the Robert McClory Bike Path Construction Project in the amount of $30,677.80. Number 14 is award of bid for the replacement of a used semi tractor for the Streets and Sanitation section as budgeted in the fiscal year 2021 capital equipment budget to CIT trucks in the amount of $41,320, including a $2,500 down payment. Number 15 is approval to authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with Flex Landscaping and Martin Associates for citywide grounds maintenance services. And number 16 is approval to authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with Klaus Brothers, Inc. for construction services associated with the South Park OS LAD Grant Improvement Project for a total project cost not to exceed $764,811. Are there any items on here that any member of the council would like to take separately?
Mr. Mayor. As the council knows, on item number nine, I have a ongoing business relationship with Mr. Altonian. So I think we should take that one separately and I can refrain from the discussion and abstain from voting on that particular item.
Okay, that pity. How do we? We'll just vote on that separately so that Alderman Morris can can abstain.
Right, we can vote on the 15 omnibus items and then we'll take that item separately.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, while we're on that item, would it would it? I assume that Director Cerniak is 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 she at the meeting? Could she? Could she help just explain operationally kind of how this is working on this appeal?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, can you hear me?
Again, loud and clear.
The appeal, the code requires that the appeal be filed within a certain number of days, which it was. The developers are interested in continuing to work to try and address some of the issues that were raised. So they simply asked that the council accept the appeal, give them more time to work and simply defer the consideration. You are not being act you are not being asked to act on the appeal tonight, simply to acknowledge it and defer action.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, so I would entertain a motion to appeal to appeal to approve all of the items on the omnibus agenda with the exception of number nine.
Oh, moves.
Second in.
Okay, that's a roll call vote.
Alderman Beidler. Alderman Morris.
Hi.
Alderman Rommel.
Hi.
Alderman Preschlack. Alderman Gashgarian.
Hi.
Alderman Moreno.
Hi.
Alderman Bushman.
Hi.
Eight yay, zero nay carries on the 15 omnibus items.
Okay, thank you, everyone. And now item number nine.
So do we need a motion on that? I'm happy to move that.
I second it.
That's a roll call vote as well.
Alderman Beidler.
Hi.
Alderman Morris.
Abstaining.
Staying. Alderman Notes.
Hi.
Alderman Rommel.
Hi.
Alderman Preschlack.
Hi.
Alderman Gashgarian.
Hi.
Alderman Moreno.
Hi.
Alderman Bushman.
Hi.
Seven yay, one abstention. Motion carries.
Okay. Thanks, everyone. Next item on our agenda is additional items for discussion and comments by council members. Any comments anybody on the council would like to make based on the extraordinary events of the last few weeks? Or anything else for that matter?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to thank the citizens and the residents. I've been out for an occasional walk just to stretch my legs, nothing extreme, and certainly not hanging out at the beach. But I I I've encountered few people and we have all distanced ourselves from each other. And so I just I feel that it's important for us to reinforce and recognize that people are doing their very best and we've got some more time ahead of us certainly. But I think I think everyone's doing a pretty good job. At least that's been my experience. So I I just I thank everyone.
Thank you. Other comments?
Yeah, it's Mr. Mayor, this is Alderman Preschlack. You know, it it often goes without saying to to thank public servants and leaders. And I wanted to thank you. You know, it's obviously not probably something you thought of when you stepped up to volunteer to be mayor and you're getting paid the big bucks, the $10 a year. And, you know, in these times of crises, you know, it's really nice to have a steady hand of leadership, experience and calm and and that's ditto for the city staff and the department heads and Jason. And I've been really impressed with all the daily updates to us, but all the all the daily updates to the community and just the calm, fact-based demeanor in which you guys have led. And I know that's been really, really helpful and it's translated into some of the calm that the citizens are having and just really appreciate it. And I think I want to say thanks to all everybody, everybody on the council here, especially Alderman, both Prue and Michelle, who are going to be stepping off here a little bit. And I'm sad that we're not going to be able to be together for dinner, just, you know, to celebrate your service. But it it's really what makes a special town. It's the people in it. It's the selfless leadership. And so I want to thank the two of you and hopefully we'll have some more time to talk next meeting. And just just really appreciate everybody stepping up during this tough time to show good leadership. And I really, really appreciate it. So thank you, everybody.
I'd like to second what Alderman Preschlack said about the mayor and and the team of the mayor and the city manager. I think I I would agree with you, Jim. I think that the calm reports that we're getting, the very steady hands on the teller really are significant at this time in a situation that nobody has ever experienced before and nobody could know exactly how to handle. And I think we've got two very strong leaders at the top and I'm extremely appreciative.
Mr. Mayor, I think that your videos have been very well received. You're now a video phenomenon, I think, on the internet. You've had an incredible number of of likes and a great idea. And it demonstrates your steady hand at the helm, which is exactly what we need right now. But I'd also echo Alderman Preschlack's sentiment that I hate missing a farewell party for Alderman Beidler and Alderman Moreno. And I'm wondering if we could do something remotely, have a little send off just with the council members some evening, maybe remotely. Maybe something to consider.
Can we just postpone?
Can we just postpone the real thing?
Yeah, so I was just going to add, not that I want to jump in here, but I will say, however long we have to wait, we will have a celebration time for both of the opposing.
Okay, even better.
That's great, because I have some good roast ready, so I don't want to do it on a video. I want to do it in person. It's much more effective.
All right, well, thank you. Yeah, this is not quite what I expected to sign up for, but you know, this is what happens. You know, over the over the course of the last almost year now, I've had a lot of people ask me, you know, how things are going. And my my comment, I mean, general comment is things are going fine. We haven't had a crisis, but I know there's one coming. I don't know where it's coming from, which direction, what it's going to be. I just know it's coming. So here we are, and hopefully this is it, and there's not another one behind it. But thank you for your compliments. And frankly, a lot of the initiative, the communication strategy and all the energy behind that has been Jason and Susan Banks just working overtime. And yeah, there may be a calm demeanor on the surface, but you know, it's like looking at a duck going across the water. If you could see below the water line, there's a lot happening. Anyway, anything else before we adjourn?
Oh, you know what? Can I mention one other thing? And that is the initiative by Green Minds with the Green Ribbon. I think everyone was sent that information through Jason. They would like to receive a video from everyone by April tenth. It's a way of remotely celebrating Earth Day, which is April twenty second. If you would just do a quick video, there's a demo of it on the information that was forwarded to you. It would be great to have some presence of the council members celebrating the fiftieth anniversary of a birthday. So please take a minute, consider it, find a green ribbon or not, I'm sure would be fine as well. So I just want to encourage everyone to do that. Jason, do you suppose you could send that that email out one more time to everyone?
Absolutely, I'd be happy to.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, one one final comment, please. I do want to thank everybody for the hard work they've been putting in, city staff, leadership, and the and the residents of Lake Forest. But I want to remind everybody not to let their guard down. This is a very serious and dangerous health-related issue. One of our many civic responsibilities are voting, but also working together as a team, all of us collectively. We don't have this thing beaten. It's not even close to being beat. I want everybody to be mindful of those guidelines that are being laid out by the CDC. There is economic help out there for those who are distressed. But what we can do most for ourselves is to not let our guard down. I don't think that I'm a particularly uniquely qualified healthcare professional, but I am nonetheless a healthcare provider. And I see this as a very serious thing. And whereas we're all pulling together, I hope we continue to do so because this is not going to go away in two weeks or three weeks or five months. That's the nature of a pandemic. And I want us all to be mindful of that, and that way we can all get through this happy and healthy and hopefully whole. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Well said. Any, there being no further comments, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Five a second.
Second it.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Okay, the first virtual meeting of the City Council of Lake Forest is hereby adjourned.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay.